James Wooton, can you lead us off in the Pledge of the Independence?
I'd love to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Felicia?
Yes.
Kat, where's Kelly?
Oh, why?
She got fired.
No. Well, I thought I would take this opportunity to go over a few things.
A few things. Cat March, what time do we have to be there?
That's some of the things we're gonna go over.
I can, let me see if it's in my calendar.
I have your shirts here.
I know it's in my calendar.
I got that at five.
It starts at nine or?
Okay, so, everyone?
Eight thirty?
Three. At Pulaski Street at nine o'clock. We, you will go meet with your class. Everyone knows who they're meeting with?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Swank wanted Donald Trump, but I gave him you instead.
I can be bombastic. Didn't you watch the last board meeting?
I did not. I don't get that channel where I live.
Tim, explain, explain, Mr. Swank. You know, it says right in there.
Coffee fee.
Tim says I can't be bombastic.
I know, I know the class wrote me a lot of letters.
Yes. Jody is in Mrs. Hubbard's class. Sean's in Mr. Swank's class. John is in Ms. Lover, Laverdy's class and...
What number is that?
One fifteen. You still have to stop at the lobby and check in with us.
One fifteen?
And Jim is in Mrs. Niss's class, of course, in the event of rain.
Never rains on this parade.
It does sometimes.
It did once.
But in the event of rain, the two of you will come at ten o'clock instead of nine o'clock. Because you're in sixth grade classes, but we're counting on sunny skies, so.
What is the weather tomorrow?
It's supposed to be sunny in the morning.
It'll be almost ten if it rains.
Well, could they do two separate attempts?
Right. But just count on being there at nine.
Yes.
Be there at nine. You can come to my class.
I'll try, please.
This is Hillary.
This is what, um...
I do like your new poster.
This is just a copy of everything ahead of time, so you know who is speaking, basically.
Get a Brian Stark a proclamation?
He's the president of the cap board. So yes, you, you will be giving him a proclamation.
You can give it to me.
I love Brian Stark. Were you a Rotarian when he was president? No, you weren't a Rotarian when he was president. That was entertaining.
Okay, so...
Colorful.
This left side is the people who will be speaking and the right side is the people who'll get recognized. So that there's no last minute kind of jockeying as far as other people who show up and, um...
Yeah, you don't need nine thousand people saying the same thing.
No, it's fifth and sixth grade students, so we really want to keep it brief and be positive about the community coming out to support them. And please call it the Say No to Drugs March and not the Just Say No to Drugs March, because it's not Just Say No. It's not that easy. Okay, so?
What's that? Say what?
It's the Say No to Drugs March, not the Just Say No to Drugs March.
Are you trying to, uh...
Shape events for tomorrow? Yes.
Shape it away from my, one of my favorite presidents' wives?
Yeah, that's not what it is.
Nancy Reagan?
It's not what it is.
Just Say No?
I know, but that's not what it is, so. It kind of trivializes it and these kids, you know, there's a lot of...
Nancy Reagan.
There's a lot of forces at play that affect adolescent decision-making, so we don't want to trivialize it. And we want to stay positive.
I'm always positive.
Okay. Any questions?
I think you said it all.
So many women in my life ruling what I have to do.
Oh, I got two of the seven, so.
Oh, we can start it now, Newsday's here.
You don't need that. You gave it to us.
I gave it to you, yeah. You get to go. Anyone need a copy of the root?
No, I just follow.
They shortened it this year, right?
It's been shortened for the last, yeah, for the last few years, so, uh, yeah.
You, your scooter?
It's the same route, scooted along it last year?
Yes, we're gonna go down.
I got a really big wagon.
Actually, but you can ride on the fire truck with Gio.
Oh, we're going down Griffin?
We go down, uh, uh, Rono.
Rono, yeah.
Rono to Railroad.
To Second Street.
Oh, Second Street, and then back to...
Past the bank, up Griffin.
Up Griffin to school.
Yeah.
And Lincoln Street.
Is the new superintendent gonna be there?
I don't think so. But Nancy Carney is the guest of honor, so, and she's retiring. So you will be giving a proclamation, not only this year to Cap, but also to Nancy Carney. I've got it all set. I've taken care of everything, yes.
I'll see what I can do.
Be a well-oiled machine, don't.
That's it? You're done?
Any questions?
No, we thought we were good. Now we're gonna go into residential solid waste collection. And you gave us T-shirts, too?
Yes.
Let's see what they look like this year.
And it's a bag. You can fight amongst yourselves with it.
You got an extra large in it?
No, I'm gonna find, no, I'm gonna give Hubbard a small.
Did you tell the public what it's about?
Yeah, you didn't tell Hubbard.
Well, I'm sorry, I sent out a press release weeks ago.
That's a large.
Uh, we're inviting the community to come to the 32nd Annual Say No to Drugs March. It starts at Pulaski Street School tomorrow morning at nine thirty.
That's a large.
Students are celebrating the completion of their two-year drug and alcohol prevention program that has been presented to them. For all fifth and sixth grade students at Pulaski Street School by cap volunteers and by peer leaders from the high school and middle school.
It must have been made, oh, yeah, it's an extra large, okay.
Why does it say that?
Very, very small here.
Yeah.
Huh?
And Nancy Carney is the guest of honor.
There's an extra large for it.
I have a press release if you didn't receive it.
We need an extra large for this.
That's probably Tim's. That looks like a double X, that one there.
What is that?
Extra large.
I think they're all extra large except this one.
No, Sean gets a large.
Thanks.
Sean gets a large.
So when it, when it shrinks, it's, um...
You pass us on.
Skin tight. Does anybody want?
Did you wanna?
Timmy?
What's that?
Pass us on.
Uh, no, it's fine.
To Jody?
I wear these all the time. I have like every year's worth of caps. Last year's was blue, though. Does anybody want this or do you want this back?
No, you can have it. It's good to recycle.
I, yeah, but I won't.
You don't shop. You don't go to a store.
If you want a different size, just see me tomorrow and I'll send it to you.
Here, somebody want, you want this?
I would love that.
Tomorrow, the, uh...
We know you don't use those, but I...
Say No to Drugs March.
Say noted.
Nine thirty, Pulaski Street School, uh, down Rono Avenue, across Second Street, up Griffith Avenue to Lincoln, uh, over to, uh...
All right, here we go.
And then up to the school, so, uh...
I'm like having a walking billboard.
If anybody can attend, it's everybody in the Pulaski Street School are children. And they make posters, so if anybody can attend to watch it, please come down tomorrow. It's gonna be a beautiful day.
You know who that is right there? Come on in.
I got a new drug-free shirt.
It's our new town.
It's yourselves. Hi, Steve Keller, Attorney Intern. How are you?
How you doing?
Oh, Joe.
Nice to meet you.
Steve is, uh, with us for the summer and, um...
Nice to meet you.
Are you in the town attorney's office?
Yes, in one of our attorneys.
That's right. I saw him yesterday when it was, he was coming out of Dorado's office.
Yes.
Was Dorado's?
Yeah, that's where I'm squatted.
Now it's probably your office.
How'd it go yesterday?
You're welcome.
Yeah.
I'm running a lot. Like, he's extremely knowledgeable. I've already picked up a lot. I went to town to interview him yesterday, so, uh, yeah, I had a lot of fun.
Good.
We're enough on contract law.
You're welcome.
Good.
Thank you, guys.
Excellent.
Welcome aboard.
I hope you have a good time.
Oh, I am.
All right.
I am.
Okay.
You don't want to discuss anything else because Dillingham and Prudential are not here. What else you want to discuss?
Dillingham.
Okay.
Pilop.
They're right outside the door. Can you see outside just ask for Drew Dillingham or Anne Marie Prudential? College, he's going to, he graduated SUNY Geneseo and he's going to William and Ma, William and Ma?
Roger.
Roger Williams. Roger Williams.
Oh, there he is.
Long Island.
It's in Rhode Island.
Is Anne Marie coming?
She is coming and she has copies.
I thought that was a cooking school.
Uh, I hope so. I'll get a good day to come.
They have a culinary program there, a very good one.
Do they?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's what it's noted for.
Yeah, it is. It is. They also have a good law school.
Right. And they have a good law school, too.
Yeah.
My login. That was just so you could print it for during that. So I just shut that down. Okay.
Okay. Are we wedding, ready?
I mean, I can, I don't have any copies. Anne Marie's bringing them, but I could start.
She knows to come now?
She was on her way.
All right, then, let's get started.
Okay, nothing is changing, except for that the EPA has put restrictions on us that we have to comply with our vehicles being upgraded by 2020. That's the only thing that's changing.
Our vehicles are the contractor's vehicles. They already use propane, actually. I walk behind them every morning. They use propane. Why do you do that? Well, I walk behind them on Mondays, not intentionally, on Mondays and Thursdays.
He's making sure that they pick the garbage up.
On Mondays and Thursdays.
Somebody throws something good out and he grabs it back out.
You're boopy.
We have, we have a new thing to garbage control.
I took my nice tractor. I bought it.
He's got plenty of firewood.
I got them.
Just gotta get it out of the road.
It's going out of the yard with.
Soon, otherwise Gio's gonna come after them.
No, they, they, they all, European must run them on propane because...
I didn't realize that.
Yeah, well, I... They do, they don't, they're the cleanest smelling garbage trucks. I never smell anything but garbage. You don't smell anything but diesel. I think they're all propane. So we've already satisfied that. Did you, so you put in there that they have to be clean fuel vehicles by 2020 or something?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think European does it.
We did that when we bid our garbage contract years ago and we were switching from Maggio to another contractor.
Did we require the last contract? Did we require the used propane?
Yep, by a certain timeframe, they had to be using energy efficient vehicles.
Well, they do.
Did I not get to that yet?
That's, uh, I think section 2.45 or something, but Councilwoman is absolutely correct.
All right, so are we ready to bid this?
And I believe the emissions have been updated again, so in my email to both you and Drew, I put, "I think we have to update that further," or "we could simply recite to New York State VTO." I think it's section 375, but there's increased emission.
I'd rather talk about my lawn tractor.
Where is that new section?
I'm like the recycling king.
So that's under section 2.7.5 equipment.
No, I read that. Did it say that? Let's read that section.
So when are we going out to bid? Like this board meeting? We can put it out because we need to...
You need 2.6.5.
Oh, 2.6.5, sorry.
2.6.5?
Page twenty-eight.
Yep.
Oh, okay, the mission's standard.
Yes.
Well, that's interesting, because 2.6.5 is not in your table of contents. So you might want to add that in your table of contents.
I think that was held out and highlighted under the email because that had to be changed. Well, it was. It is.
I'm good with it. So let's get the thing on the street, because I need a number by, how long, we gotta give at least thirty days to bid it?
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
It is a big contract.
So Joanne and I redid the, and updated the, um, contract units. We met with Laverne and we did that. The one issue I wanted to discuss with Drew and the councilwoman and the deputy supervisor, because we met last year on this, was it appears that there is a condominium unit included in one of the garbage districts that has been receiving service and paying for it, though, so I don't know.
Which condominium unit?
Bating Hollow Cottage Condominiums.
They're paying for it.
It's a private community.
Who are they?
But they're paying for it.
Well, but pursuant to our code and the contract, it's residential, not commercial.
It was a coded one, that's why at least.
Are they single family?
They're, I confirmed with Laverne. Laverne told me they are condominiums. They are, quote, detached units, but they're condominiums.
Where are they? Bating Hollow Cottage?
At the end of, um...
Drew confirmed.
Yeah.
At the end of Oak Lake.
Where are they?
Right hand side, yes.
That's that summer community that they're only there, like, seasonally.
Right.
We're making a killing on that community.
Well, it's not my issue. It's, I'm just alerting the town. It's a commercial condominium.
But it's also against our code, too.
Right.
Yeah, wait, can I ask you a question? Where are these condominiums?
At the end of Oak Lake, John.
At the end?
Yeah.
Yeah. When you make a left to go to, um, Edgewood, you make a right.
Cross from Woodcliff Park.
Woodcliff.
The opposite side of Woodcliff Park.
I always call it Edgewood.
Is anybody there full-time?
I, I have no information on them.
I don't think so.
No.
Well, it could be. I, I misspoke.
So have we spoken to this owner that we would be discontinuing this because we don't want him on?
Well, no, it's the first time I'm bringing it up to the board because Laverne alerted me to it and said, you know, you really have to address it. I was not aware.
I don't want to have another 189 brought in against us.
Well, first thing, first thing we have to find out if it's full-time residence.
They're paying for it in their taxes.
They are paying for it. They're included in the district.
It just opens up a can of worms, because there's gonna be other condominium associations that are paying for it in their taxes that are gonna want the same service.
Well, that's what I wanted to ask you. Do the other condominiums pay for it in their taxes?
No.
Garbage district?
Okay, so we have to let them know we can't do it because it's not part of our code and that, deal with it that way. We have to let them know.
And then...
It's a very good lucrative thing for us to be doing, because they're only there a couple months out of the year.
Take it off their tax rolls and then go private or something.
They have to, and their corridor has to report to us. Their corridor has to be licensed with the town and report to us what they're picking up.
I think it should be from the next tackling season, though, if they were paying this issue.
I, I noticed some of the cottages there.
Anne Marie, I'm gonna give you the duty to call them and let them know that...
Some of the cottages?
Yeah. Because it's...
They're, apparently, according to Laverne, they're registered with New York State as a commercial condominium unit.
That's probably for tax purposes.
That's why I didn't know where they were. They're cottages.
I know, they're little summer, they're not, I don't know if they have water year-round. They may not have water year-round.
They don't.
Okay, so call the owner.
I agree that they should pay their own, but I mean, they're not, I don't think they're condominiums.
Tell, let the owner know that we can't do this, unfortunately, um, and he, he's...
Can you imagine?
Come December thirty-first or January first, he's going to have to contract with somebody to pick up the trash.
Okay.
It's a shame, because it's a, it is a money maker for the town.
It's a way that they set up the association as to whether or not they were condominiums or if they were single-family homes. And condominiums pay taxes based on rental income, not on the value, the market value of their units. So it's how they set it up.
That's not how this tax gets billed.
They pay forty percent of what a residential taxpayer pays.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, just let them know we can't do it because it's not part of our contract.
So, and then the only other issue, I just wanted to go over the maps with you, Drew, and make sure we've captured everything in...
It's the six that districts that...
Correct. I want to make sure we've captured everybody.
Should I chart math of these districts in here? Chart?
I did print them out, but they're up online.
Okay, that's fine. I don't need to see.
But I think we should double check those.
I just know that European is fantastic, Carter.
Awesome.
Did a great job.
They do a great job, and the new setup that you've had now for a few years with the two-day pickup was, it's so much better.
The residents finally got used to the fact, like, on Memorial Day, if you don't have trash, you don't get it on Tuesday. You have to put it away. Which works fine. It saves us money, because you're not paying overtime for Saturday pickups.
Why are you here, then?
And that's been the way since we've been using European American. And I remember when we were switching.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Yes.
That they're built on town property?
Yes.
Right?
When we switched...
Years ago, we tried to...
On eight bells?
Yeah, the one that goes down at that end. Could you make sure that they're paying taxes on all the property that they're built on?
Yes.
That's theirs, the town's property, too?
Yes.
They should be paying taxes on that.
I agree.
Oh, you think, I'm sorry.
So, when we went out for bid last time, we had the help of Cashin Associates. The board voted to bring Cashin Associates in, who has a significant amount of experience with solid waste, management plans, and things of that nature. So it was the recommendation of Cashin that we switched from Saturdays to two days during the week, because the, if there was a Monday holiday, they were picking up on Saturdays. So we switched that. We added a lot more service, and I think everybody seems very happy. We, I was warned when we were putting it out for bid that people liked Maggio and that we may not be happy with the new Carter. And if the new Carter came in and was a disaster, that they were gonna line up at my door. So I'm happy to say that everybody's happy with European American and...
Well, and the big issue was price went down.
Significantly.
Two hundred and thirty-nine dollars per...
Household.
So now we have to hold that...
Well, I can tell you, the apprehension was there, because Maggio did a great job.
Yeah.
And now we're switching to another company at much less bid. You're like, are you really gonna get a bang for your buck? And, and you do, except for that one time where they, they don't do the next day. They wait till Thursday, which is fine. The only thing I find, and it's, it's, I don't need to be, but when you have multiple pickups like that, people really aren't very conscientious when it comes to recycling. I see a lot of stuff out that shouldn't be out, that should be in recycling on, on a Wednesday or a Tuesday, whatever your recycling day is. But then I find out where they take it. There's a lot of, uh, recycling that goes on there. So it does get out eventually, but people aren't really taking care of it.
Well, I think they go to the same spot where Brookhaven goes. At Brookhaven doesn't have recycling.
They go to Maggio.
They, they have, uh, everything going and they recycle at the plant.
They take all the garbage, they dump it out on the floor, they take a backhoe, they lift it up, they put it on a conveyor belt. They have compartments that they separate even after it's been recycled.
I know, but because of that, I think people are getting lazy and not doing source separating like they're supposed to be doing.
I do. All right, can we, when do we release the bid?
One other issue.
One other issue.
Um, while European American has...
I think it's just European. European Americans, the bank.
I don't know what...
No, thank you. It's European American.
Are they still a business?
You walk behind the garbage trucks. You can't tell.
Yeah, right. It, they're white. They're nice trucks. They kept clean and, um, so, you know. I haven't not received any complaints since we've had them. Like I used to with garbage cans in the middle of the road. I think they're doing a great job.
I was gonna say. Because you were not in the way they don't exist.
No.
Well, we have been very fortunate, because they have been willing, anytime the town has contacted them regarding the elderly or hardship regarding pickup. And they have been willing to go to back doors, side doors, so these individuals don't have to bring it out. So I was thinking, since we are going out to bid and we don't know who the successful bidder is, we should beef that provision up a little bit more and have a stern requirement.
No.
No.
And European doesn't charge extra either.
They're just nice people.
So I think we should beef that up in this contract, because we may not have a contractor that's willing to do all that.
We should also address snow days, when the roads haven't been plowed yet and the garbage doesn't get picked up on residential streets, that there's a, something in there that says that if the road is not plowed, when they're supposed to pick up on a Tuesday, that they'll come back on a Wednesday and do it, or something to that effect. Because if our plows don't get down the roads in time, the people's garbage can't just keep piling up at the curb.
We're just suspended. Unless it's gonna be just two or three days, we suspend it.
Two days a week. If you don't get it on a Monday or Tuesday, they're gonna get it on a Thursday or Friday.
But we did get some complaints about that last year.
Evidence, same as the holiday. You get it the next day.
Okay, now what do you have in there?
I very rarely tell them they can't come unless it's a state emergency. They leave it to the discretion of the mayor.
The private community pickups, like Maggio picks up in Foxwood and they have recycling. Do they?
They have to license with the clerk and they do quarterly reporting to the town as to what they're picking up and then they write us a check for the recyclables.
Okay, all right. That's what I want to know.
Let's...
Thank you.
What do you want to firm up on the seniors?
So I just want to add in a provision that...
That'll be a service.
Yeah, they're required, you know.
Might elevate some other bids.
And the town will determine what proof is required in order to entitle that resident to have that.
I brought up my neighbor's driveway. There's a long driveway.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know why we have to put that in there. I think it's up to the, to the drivers. I mean, you know, if we put it in there, next thing you know, everybody, it's like the handicap. I don't care. Everybody gets a handicap when they go to doctors, right? It, it's gonna be the same thing. They'll be walking up everybody's driveway.
No, the town is going to determine.
Yeah, well, the problem, yeah, I, I...
We're gonna determine?
I, I think so, because, you know, it's difficult for some of the residents to then war with the corridor whether or not they're entitled to it or their disability qualifies. I think town staff would make that determination.
I don't, I don't, I, I really, I really wouldn't, that, no.
Right.
No, I, you know, because...
We do that now.
Of course, I have a handicap thing there. I can't bring my garbage out, no.
Can I call Anne Marie?
No. I mean, some people have handicaps and they should be walking.
Well, they do call. I mean, we have, you know, right, Drew?
John, there are people that legitimately need the service. They can't get out of the house.
But how they get in the garbage out to the, outside the front door?
Yeah, it's out, like, the side door or right out the back, just right outside.
People are homebound. They don't ever leave their houses.
No, that's not true.
They might have taxis pick them up or friends.
Or ambulats. I mean, I don't receive call...
I think we should discuss that further.
I would recharge, what does the town do?
We're discussing it now, because this bid has to go out Tuesday. It has to.
I think that...
We need the, we need the counters for September.
You can take your, a poll, but I mean...
Good, let's take a poll.
All right, I'm okay with beefing it up so that the town makes a determination.
I think what you're doing in this bid spec is you're just recognizing what's being done already.
That's correct.
I don't think that's gonna invite people to, the general public ain't gonna read this anyway.
No.
It's not gonna invite people to say, oh, wait a second, the town's doing it.
Ah, you know something? I don't know, but I see everything being misused. Ah, you know something, I don't know, but I see everything being misused.
We're doing our poll, we're polling the board now, I'm okay with it, John, you're against beefing it up, Jim, where are you?
I, I think if it's, what we're doing is highlighting what's being done already, and I think it's a good service that people need, and...
Okay, Tim, where are you?
Ain't gonna harm to me, I ain't walking up the driveway.
Uh, we, I agree, we need to beef it up, and it's a service that's provided now, should we not get European, we need to be able to provide the same service.
Good, you got three, beef it up, sorry, all right, what else you got?
That's it.
All right, you're gonna release this on Tuesday, publisher, not publisher, but...
A resolution to authorize publishing posts.
And it's gonna go out at least thirty days or forty-five days, it's a big contract.
Yeah, Joanne has all the dates already.
Just make sure it's at least thirty to forty-five days, because that's a big contract to...
So will you track all the maps?
Because Bill, we need, we need the number for this, basically by the second board meeting at the latest September.
They were with a handicap hanging up.
We've gotta back into this contract date, because by the very latest, the second board meeting in November, the second board meeting in September, I need it for my budget to adopt it.
I know, okay.
It would be better.
Okay.
Right. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Pilots. Should we bring in Bob in here, anybody from the town attorney's office? Somebody to call him?
I'll call him. Well, it has to, you know, you really have to be homebound, you have to be on wheels, on wheels.
They sent it out, good.
I think people are getting really lazy, they can't bring their garbage out to the road.
Hey, Laura, can you send Bob down?
I, I don't disagree with that, I don't disagree with that at all, but I think in the situations they were talking about here, it's really, the people that really need it are legitimately requesting it. We're not gonna go out and advertise that we do this.
No, my, my neighbor would be very upset. I would probably have to go get her garbage and bring it out.
I just don't wanna see our eight's coming up because of it.
We have it on public TV, what do you mean we're not gonna tell anybody?
All right, you wanna start, Pilop, Bob's on his way.
Sure, sure, sure. Okay, Pilop program, Pilop program is a program that has been used in several communities, East Hampton, Glen Cove, Patchogue. And what Pilop stands for, it's called a payment in lieu of parking. And with the situation that we have, where we will be experiencing downtown with a lack of parking with new apartments coming in, this is a way to raise some revenue for the parking dri- district to actually purchase future parking spaces and/or money towards a parking garage. What it does is, Pilop's...
Or parking spots.
Parking spots for a parking garage. Pilop is, it stands, it's a payment in lieu of parking, and what it does is, and I'm gonna give you an example of, say we have an apartment complex that's gonna be built downtown, it's a hundred and fifty apartments. With the code, you're required one point five parking spaces per apartment, so that would, that would require two hundred and twenty-five parking spaces. The building itself is only gonna provide fifty parking spaces underneath it, that's all they can fit under there. So that leaves a hundred and seventy-five spaces more that are needed, that they're not providing for their people, that technically the parking district is going to lose towards residents, the residents are gonna use those spaces, retail's gonna lose those spaces because residents are gonna use them. So what we do is, we came up with a figure, and the figure that I suggested is fifteen hundred dollars per spot. So if you need an extra hundred and seventy-five spaces for your complex, at fifteen hundred dollars apiece, it's gonna bring in about two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars into the parking district.
Is that our...
It's a one-time fee.
But is it for residential and commercial, or just the residential?
Correct, it's, it's, it's gonna be for residential and commercial. If a new restaurant opens up, and there's a formula that you use per the square footage of the, um...
Restaurant.
Of the restaurant, it's one parking, one parking space per hundred square feet of space in the restaurant.
Now, is this a one-time fee?
It's a one-time fee, yes, it would be a one-time fee that would be put into the district, and it's a way to raise money into the district to maintain the parking that we have, and purchase or acquire new parking in the future. Basically, you, if you do this, you're purchasing what they call a virtual parking space. Because that parking space that you're buying isn't there right at the moment, but that money's going into a kitty to, which is the parking district, to help fund and purchase more parking, whether it be through condemnation, or whether it be eventually through a parking garage. It's another avenue to raise money for the parking district, the parking district is woefully underfunded.
Yes.
There's just not enough...
And it's a big tax, too.
And it's a big tax to the, to the businesses downtown. So this will require anything new coming in, unfortunately, I wish this was done probably ten years ago. But in the meantime, it's, it will provide us a little bit, we know we're, we're getting close to the build-out downtown if some of these projects come to fruition. In the meantime, if we can get going with this, we can require some, some money to come in for parking spaces that they're not providing for there.
I have two questions, one, um, the way Patchogue does it, and I think we should do it the same way, if it's a restaurant, a new restaurant comes in, and an existing restaurant, they wouldn't pay parking district taxes, because it was, but if it was a dry store and went to a restaurant, they would pay parking taxes. And so I, that's fine, I thought we were gonna start at first just with the residential, not with both, but does the board wanna do it, because it's...
Well, that's why I brought it up to the work session, I, I'm open to anything, this is just something I've researched a little bit and discussed with a few people, so...
I have a couple trains of thoughts on it, I, I, I think we should do it both commercial and residential, at least, because that's what we're really dealing with in that, in that area, the DC one is what we're really concerned about.
DC one and DC three?
I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not sure the fifteen hundred dollars, that might be a good number, I know that should be more or less, that could be...
Have to be careful, because we're, you're modeling it after Patchogue, they haven't been challenged yet, but, and there's a cap, too. Patchogue puts a cap.
No, they don't have a...
They don't have a parking district, but they...
Well, it's a one-shot deal, so, you know, you're, you're buying into the parking district, and you know what? We don't have parking, so it, it makes sense they're actually investing in their own future that way.
But the one thing, is they were, Patchogue caps it at seventy-five thousand or something like that.
Yes, they do, they do.
So we wouldn't cap it?
No.
Well, we could, that's, again, up for discussion, it's something you need to think about.
I just wanna ask one question.
In this scenario I gave you...
It's gonna be in the answer, you said the people who pay this will not pay parking district taxes?
No, they will.
They will, okay, I thought I heard him say they will.
Why wouldn't we just require people to provide parking for whatever business, or rest, or apartments, or business that they're proposing?
Because that's not the way the code's written when you're in the parking district.
So if we can change the code to charge pileup fees, why can't we change the code to make them provide their own parking?
It's a fact.
We haven't done this yet.
No, we're talking about people that are buying businesses and buying buildings in the parking district are part of the parking district.
That's why, that's why you're purchasing a virtual space, you can't provide, if, the parking's not there, you can't provide it.
Right.
So it's only gonna be fixed through a parking garage or purchased in the...
Say guaranteeing them a space, just saying, you may get a space if it's available.
So the Sears building, the Sears building is coming in for an application for a hundred and seventy units. He's gonna provide a hundred and twenty parking spaces, so for the fifty parking spaces, it would be, you know...
Not fifty, it's more than fifty, because it's one point five per apartment.
Right, but why wouldn't we just have him provide the parking? Because we don't have the land, and the money that we're gonna get from him is not going to let us buy land and create the number of parking spaces that he would need even still at his full build-out. So why wouldn't we just change the code to require that they provide their own parking for whatever proposal they're coming in with?
First, we can't have, you can't... I, in, in what Tim is talking about, and what they did in Patchogue, if you have a dry store, like Ben Franklin's was a dry store, and Ben Franklin's goes to a restaurant, you, they can never provide parking, because they built lot line to lot line, so what, that would still be a use that would require parking. Now, Patchogue caps it at seventy-five thousand, I think, so that if Ben Franklin came in, and they went to a, you know, two-hundred-seat restaurant catering hall, and they needed two-hundred parking spaces, they'd be capped at seventy-five thousand, and you would receive money. The only question that I, because you're in the parking district, kinda...
We have parking, we have a special district that's established.
We have a special district, I, I'm wondering out loud if it's a legitimate thing that existing owners would have to pay this a second time, because Patchogue doesn't have the parking district anymore, they used to. New owners, or not new owners, new construction, I could absolutely see charging this fee, too. But I don't know whether an existing owner, that's...
Well, that's what this is, this is only for new construction, or a business that wants to add on to its business.
Patchogue, if you're existing, they did not charge you that.
Correct.
No, if you go from one use to another, they do.
Or you, or you put a new, or a new business that would have...
Right, the one button store went to a restaurant, so now it's gonna require that, that would be the stipulation.
Well, usually, that's what happens, Jimmy, except for strange things that happen the other way, which happened. That's usually going forward.
I like, I like the idea of the pileup a lot, and I think parking garage is the way to go.
I think inevitably, it's gonna have to be a parking garage.
And we have to look at, if you have to look at it ahead fifteen years from now, you know, it's, there's only so much land you can develop, there's only so much parking you can possess, you're gonna have to put a structure up somewhere. And I think this would generate at least some seed money, I think that between that and enforcement, and I think we should have paid parking all over Main Street, to be honest with you, I think everything should be paid.
Well, that's the way, that's the way municipalities are going now, they're, they're getting paid parking all over, putting meters up to, you need it.
But...
You, you have to supply parking, you know.
These are different approaches to creating revenue, creating revenue source in order to justify down-the-road bonding to build this garage. And they come in, I just, I did some research on the garages, they actually come pre-made a lot of these, so a lot of them, they're not as expensive as used, and they used to be, but they come in sections, so they can actually be erected pretty quickly.
Well, like in Patchogue, I know someone lives in, in an apartment house, and they have parking, they regulate up, but they charge the residents so much to park there, and guess what?
Sure, sure.
They park across the street in the fire department, where it's free, right? They only have to leave one road and fire department available with firemen, and they park, so really, a lot of people don't use the paid parking that was supplied when they were built.
Oh, people always want a place for parking.
I think this is a way to generate revenue, to look towards the future of perhaps building a parking garage and paying down the bond indebtedness through this, but I, I just see it...
Requirement for new people coming, that's something we could look at as well.
I just see it as a one-time fee, that's really not gonna get us for more parking.
A one-time fee is not gonna get us, I don't agree with you there, it will not get us there.
It's not gonna get us more parking.
It's a combination of everything. Patchogue didn't have all meters when they first started, they were like us, they had a couple meters in.
They only had a couple hundred now, they don't have a whole meter.
And so they backed, and all of this has, this is an evolving thing for Patchogue, as well as it will be for us. So Patchogue, now it's all meter, but the seed money to pay for the meters and mini-meters, we don't even have the seed money to pay for the mini-meters, so this provides the seed money. I would favor this for the apartments, I'm hesitant right now to go, and it's a legal question, I'm hesitant to go to the commercial and say you have to pay it, because the commercial pays parking district taxes, and it's almost like a double taxation, so if you're...
Well, then we should raise, then we should raise the, the...
Then we may have to reconfigure the parking district taxes.
Which is woefully inadequate, as is.
And that's, and that's...
But it's a steep tax, too.
It's not that steep.
Yes, it is.
But you know what, you have, you have a contractor that's coming downtown, that's buying a lot for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, he's gonna put probably a couple hundred thousand into it to create thirty stalls, so that's like three hundred and fifty, four hundred and fifty thousand for thirty spots. And this is not gonna solve our problem with needing parking, it's gonna give us...
If you've got four hundred thousand dollars, Jody, we could, if we got four hundred thousand dollars in a one, a one-shot deal, we could probably put in thirty, forty spots just in some of the houses that...
But it's not gonna, if, if the parking is deficient by seventy-five or a hundred spots, putting in thirty spots for that money is not gonna cover even that building or that project alone.
What are you gonna do, throw your hands up and do nothing?
No, what I think should happen is, I think that we need to look at what the parking districts are, taxes are that people are paying. I think that we need to look at the apartments and see the number of spaces that are needed, and evaluate what the parking district taxes are based on the uses in the existing buildings.
They're high, you're paying a lot of parking district taxes.
I do, I understand that, but I don't, I think this is a great idea, Tim. I think it's a good thing for right now, for the moment, because we are under pressure with all of these buildings coming in. But I think that the only way to solve the problem is to have the developers provide the parking, one spot per unit, or whatever they're required to have, for their proposal of the number of units.
I wish you had said that several years ago, when you put Summerwind out.
That would kill a...
Well, you know what, Summerwind was, excuse me, with all due respect, Summerwind was a hangout for prostitutes, drug dealers, and people with guns and knives, and the community was begging for Summerwind to come. And when Summerwind came, and then other apartments started to come, parking, parking was never a problem, because you know what? There were people parking their butts in the back parking lot doing drugs and, and shooting up, so, yeah, absolutely.
Really? I was a cop in this town, I'm not aware of that.
I wish you were an officer.
Well, where were you, you were behind a desk in headquarters, so... Anyway, that's what I heard from the cops that were there, and everybody welcomed Summerwind to come.
That's the older adage.
And then Summerwind came, and then, and Summerwind was the first one in downtown.
And it's part of the parking problem down there.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, but none of the other stores existed before Summerwind came.
I don't, I don't disagree that Summerwind shouldn't be there, but Summerwind is now part of the parking problem down there.
Okay, but so are all the new, so are, so are the hundred and seventeen units you're about to approve, so are the hundred and seventy units you're about to approve.
I'm not gonna kill your competition by restricting the parking.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, hold on a minute.
Well, you already are, if you're voting for this.
Actually, Jody, you shouldn't be, you should be recusing yourself from this, because you're involved in the parking.
Okay, Jody doesn't have to recuse herself, let's bring this back to square one. I'm gonna support this, but I'd like to look at it not from the commercial standpoint, Tim, because I think we have to look at...
That's fine, I, I agree, that makes sense.
The issue of the double taxation, I would completely support it for new residential units. So for every residential unit you bring down that you don't provide parking, you gotta give us one and a half stalls. I think you have to talk to the, or pay fifteen hundred bucks, I think you have to talk to the planning department to see if one and a half stalls is...
Wait, what about new commercial?
Let me finish, yeah, I think you have to talk to the planning department to see if one and a half stalls is right for millennial housing, because I, I think these...
I think it's high.
I think it's high, I think it's one, I think one.
I think, I think we changed it, but I, I agree with you to the extent that, yes, if you could, we're talking about commercial, residential, because that's what's gonna have the impact on Main Street, because it's not just a commercial, it's all of a sudden you have a hundred apartments with it. So I, I get it, so that's why you wanna extrapolate the residential out, that might be the way to go, because the commercial's gonna have their own parking district tax anyway.
Right.
That's not passed on to the residences, right?
And we can start it with the residential and see whether we wanna put it...
I still think you should make a use for, from a dry to a wet.
I just wouldn't, I, I just wouldn't do that yet.
We just, from a legal standpoint, I wanna, I wanna look at that.
I got a Griffin hardware for a screw, if I'm gonna have dinner, there's fifteen other people after dinner.
I know, but you gotta look at that, because we're, these guys, these existing structures are in there paying parking district taxes, do they have some sort of entitlement?
Right, that's the, I get it, I get it.
That's the difference between us and Patchogue, they don't have the parking district, so we will have to research that.
I get it, yeah, I get it, that makes sense.
So I would, I, my personal preference, I would draft it, not draft it now for the residential. So to the extent the Gallo projects providing parking, if they don't provide parking for fifty units, they're gonna pay fifteen hundred dollars of a one and a half, or whatever, whatever the number, because I don't, I don't know if one and a half is right for this, this kind of parking, I don't know. And then we can, what, if we can, let's go to public hearing on that, and then see what the public, let's see what the public...
It is right, one and a half, you could have two people, adults living in, each have a car, I mean, that's two.
You can, but I don't think that's what's happening.
Well, you're talking two and three-bedroom apartments, you know there's gonna be more than one car per apartment, maybe not all of them,
That's what I'm saying, yeah. Right.
But it's gonna be more than one, right, and that's something I'll check with Brad, Brad, and see what we...
So a one-bedroom unit would be potentially, or studio in a one-bedroom might be one, and a two, I, I don't know, maybe one and a half is the...
Well, that's what's currently on the books.
That's probably the, one and a half, probably the mean.
It could be right.
We, I know we lowered it on fifty-eight area, but I don't know.
Brad's not a planning guy, so...
Well, that's like the hospitals, one and a half parking spaces a bed, but they don't, they don't count their employees.
Sure he is.
Brad, Brad's like, one and a half could be right.
Right.
So I mean, huh?
All right, let's research that, draft it up, here's, what am I doing?
The whole, the whole thing with, with the parking district is, there is no one answer to solve the problem down there. There's gonna have to be a multitude, you're gonna have to approach it in several different ways to make it work, whether it be a parking garage, whether it be doing a combination of condemnation and a parking garage, whether it be through the Pilop program to raise some money, to purchase some future space, there's no one answer for it. We have, we've looked at that map and looked at that map, and it is what it is, and I hate to say that, but it is what it is, and there's only so much you're gonna be able to do.
Me personally, I'm with you on that, and you're right, I mean, it has to be a multi-pronged approach, I just, I don't wanna see the entire downtown buildings in surface parking, you know, so if we could do some structured parking, I don't need just a couple hundred stalls, really. I don't think you need a lot, because there's a lot of transit people in and out.
Right.
And I, I think, you're right, maybe some land use on Second Street for entryways into the garage area.
But with, in, in agreement to what Jody said, we really need to attack hard, anything new coming in has to provide, should provide parking for everything that they need, and if they can't, this is where we've gotta hit them hard.
We'll call it a pileup, but really it's more of an impact.
Right.
When we had meters downtown, uh, Main Street flourished. When we, they said, take the meters out, because shoppers don't wanna stop, and we took the meters out in downtown, right downhill. They're blaming Tanga, but I mean, you know, you have to have people transient. You can't have employees parking in front of the store, because they don't wanna walk.
Everybody understands that, John, but we don't even have the money in the parking district account to pave, fix sidewalks, and buy mini-meters, so this does that. So what I'm gonna say to Bob, if, if I can be so bold, is draft it, if, we'll see...
I'll draft the legislation.
Draft it for the residential units first, let's go to public hearing on that, because the business owners are gonna come out, and they'll blast us, or they'll be in favor of it, and let's do it on the new residential constru-, new residential construction. So again, if you had a building, like you already had apartments upstairs, you wouldn't have to, if you're just renovating, you wouldn't have to do it. But if you're building a new building, you gotta put the parking.
What's your definition of construction, after they put that into the planning, when?
You knock a building down, and you decide...
Now, so we only have one building left.
When does it start?
Yeah.
If you don't have an approved site planned, upon approved site plan, it would be one of the conditions of the approved site plan.
So if you have a site plan in already, you would not be covered under this, if it's approved.
If it's been approved.
Right.
Okay.
The two of them that we're dealing with now would be covered by this.
But you know what, I gotta say, we've done our job in creating a parking problem downtown.
They're gonna make it a lot worse.
Because when Summerwind was built, Cody's, or your business had just gone out of business, the Boardwalk restaurant,
can we just bring this, can we just bring this back?
There were several other businesses that were non-existent.
Residential, public hearing.
Residential, public hearing, new construction residential along the lines of what Gallo and Munchnick and Conifer are doing.
No conversion to a wet use at this point, we're gonna leave that alone.
Don't do the wet use, because you gotta do the research to see whether you can do that, I mean, that's a, that's a...
Well, you know what you can do, if you wanna look at the parking district taxes, is you look at, I think there's a formula for whether you have a dry use or wet use now, as far as what you pay in taxes, if they're not, they should be.
I think we should do away with parking.
Should be a sliding scale to what type of business you have, as to what your parking taxes should be.
No.
What'd you say, do away with the parking district?
Based on assess value question.
Oh, is that what it was?
It's just based on assess value question. Let's do it that way and put it up for public hearing.
We've got more problems.
How do you recoup the money, though?
Well, we've got more problems with the, and then we can then make the decision on what we wanna do. Right now, we, nobody can make a decision on what they wanna do.
Let's bite off, let's bite off what we think we can bite off, I'll do the pileup.
I think this is good, I think the pileup is good, if we, if we take the money and be invested in the meters, because then the income from the meters could go towards paying back a loan or a parking structure.
That's why I say, it's a piecemeal plan that's gonna have to be done downtown, there's no one answer for it.
There's no, there's no, there's no answer.
All right, so I'm passing out, and Ann Marie's gonna come down, I haven't even looked at this. This is going to be forever known as the Civiletti Amendment.
Oh, Lord.
So...
These are just additions to the label.
So this, Ann Marie's gonna come talk about it.
Now, these aren't the, are they?
No, these are different, adopted, I don't know what he's handing out.
These are just additions to the, these are just additions to your resolution pack.
So we got another one, too, you got the same one?
Okay.
Jimmy?
What?
You got the same one, or you got a new one?
No, I'm, I'm doing something totally different. Please ignore, please ignore the man behind the curtain. I'm passing out additional resolutions to tack on to the other.
So Anne Marie's gonna come down to discuss this.
You read development.
What happened was, about a month ago, I had a conversation with somebody that said that we hadn't adopted, we haven't, never updated the old RDC regulations to make them town board regulations and update them to today's current situations with EPCAL. And of course, I was pacing in front of my house and completely forgot about it. But luckily, a wonderful reporter wrote an editorial about it to remind me. So I sent the, um, an email to the staff, and I wanna ask Anne Marie if the other folks have vetted, looked at this too. I sent it to Isler, Heller, and Anne Marie to come up with provisions that the town board would use to vet projects at EPCAL. So that's what this one is, Anne Marie'll come down in a minute. Why don't we put that one aside and go to, you handed out some other resolutions?
Yeah, I just handed, it's just for the end of our resolution packet, it's just additional resolutions.
You didn't even give it to me, you handed it to everybody else but not me.
I, oh, an excellent one.
All right, Anne Marie's here, so Anne Marie, can we, can we discuss the-
Yes.
It's just for the end of the packet.
Okay.
I provided a long tortured history.
Has this gone to Heller and Isler yet to look at?
Uh, no, but verbally, I spoke to them last night. Frank agreed with my plan, what I was doing. I had to finish and find all the old resolutions in order to give you a good history on it.
Go ahead.
So, basically, it's amending the rules and procedures for qualified and eligible only to the extent that it eliminates, um, the reference to the local development corporation, which was called the Riverhead Development Corporation. They originally had initial review way back, it started in the nineteen nineties, actually.
Remember the group, Goodell and O'Leary.
Prior to transfer of the property.
You still have Phil Cardinelli's name in here?
Well, it is intentionally.
Oh, okay, I see that.
Now, uh, let me, uh-
That's the first thing you picked right out, didn't you?
The RDC was formed-
No, because I'm like-
Correct.
Because the town board at that time didn't wanna look at every, by the one that put an application. So this was a screening, uh, committee to screen the applications and only present the applications that were, uh, that had the money-
Worthy.
Worthy of, of, of coming.
They were the first sign.
Yeah, so, so what we're doing was, we're taking away the screening, and we're gonna, and the town board is gonna look at all the applications.
As it should.
And for years since the adoption of the resolution stating that the RDC fulfilled its duties and was no longer necessary, since that time, all the qualified and eligible have been going through the CDA or the town board acting as and for the CDA.
If, if it's presented, I, I think our screening committee is our real estate.
Pretty much.
They screen it before they, they give it to us, so, uh-
Yeah, they've taken the curve that, that, not-
We still have a screening committee, but it's not a, a law, it's, uh, real estate that's screening.
So, in essence, this resolution is just updating.
It's housekeeping, really, it's cleaning it up.
Give it to RDC.
So what I'd like you to do, I'm sorry, Jimmy, you done?
No, I, I am done, I just wanted to bring it back to where we're here, and I don't want the history.
What I, then what I'd like you to do is just get Heller's and Isler's comments on the basic provisions, and-
Those are Frank's.
The original ones.
The preamble is mine, the history, and the amendment is Frank's. Because I had to give you the history of why we were doing this.
All right, just make sure, so did Heller look at this too?
Um, yes, Frank sent his edit to both of us.
So all the attorneys, we now have five attorneys working on the sale of EPCAL.
What we're doing is crossing that section out, that's all we're doing.
Exactly.
No, we're adopting it as our own.
How many pages is the history? When do I get to the new stuff, Anne Marie?
Well, but, you know, Denise probably can appreciate this, you know, it started back in ninety-two.
How was your research?
Say that again?
What was your research?
So, you know.
All right, so hell, if, if, if all of you, multitude of attorneys are okay with this, we will digest it and die in, put it in the packet for Tuesday, Jill'll pack it for Tuesday. But all, if the, all the attorneys are good, then we'll digest it and then we'll put it in, so I don't know what-
Okay.
Okay, I mean, I can't, I'm gonna look at it more closely.
All right, so these resolutions that I have, Anne Marie, that you, did you give me these, were session forty-seven, forty-eight, and forty-nine?
No, that, that's not-
I just handed those out, because those are gonna be a tack on to the end of our resolution, the clean lay.
Yeah, that has nothing to do with what we're discussing.
Okay.
So good.
All right.
Good, thanks, Anne Marie, so this would be, in theory, resolution fifty.
Well, or forty, right.
Anybody else want, I had other ones for the- And if the other press wants the Civiletti resolution, it's here, I'm sorry, should've called. Were you on the board when the RDC was originally? Okay, so forty-seven, let's discuss forty-seven, it's in front of me.
That's at the end of our resolution.
That's at the end of it, that's at the end of them.
If I can't turn this thing on again.
Oh, now we got a fifteen minute delay. Bench strength partners are storming.
It was, huh? Nope, I'm just impatient, so I'll just keep hitting the button, kinda like-
Fifty-nine pages, I must have some contracts in here.
Ooh, she's shutting you off, man. Shut off the speaker, that's a boring resolution.
Now, why are we transferring cell power, a cell tower revenue to consultants?
All right, resolution. Phil, you might as well sit up here, because you have resolutions to look at?
What a district requests. So, John, your answer on the cell towers is we pay bench strength partnership to manage those and go out and get more cell towers or negotiate our new contracts, and they get a percentage of it, which is above and beyond what we already have. So these are revenues that we have to, or these are payments we have to make to them based on revenues they've generated. So we're increasing-
Okay, is this a one-time thing, or is this every year?
Uh, well, it depends, if, if, yeah, if there's a cell tower lease or contract that comes due and they renegotiate, if they bring in more, they get a percentage of the additional revenue that they bring in.
So we're paying them.
So if we bring in a thousand dollars and they bring in two thousand, they get a percentage of the additional thousand dollars.
And they get thirty-one grand, so they run a lot of money.
For this year, but every year going forward, for the next four years of that contract, we collect the additional thousand.
Okay, so it's a one-time fee?
Yes.
Okay. Before, yeah.
All right, resolution two. Plant ten variable frequency drive installation budget adjustment. That's actually for water, water, and that's the plant ten up at, um, the interesting thing about the water, plant ten is our water tower over in Northville. So when we open the gate valve, whatever the pressure in the tank is, we put in the pipe. So if we're running into a shortage of water in the system, we flood the system with whatever's in the pipe, rather than meter the water in to take what you really need to keep pressures where you need to be, we just throw the pressures up to whatever it is and empty the tank out. This will allow us to slow down, tank ten to be emptied, and give us more water while maintaining pressures.
Go dry slow, I get it.
That's right, we're, you know, bleed it out rather than just opening the gate valve.
Slow bleed.
Right. If it keeps raining, we won't even need the water district this year.
Yeah, okay.
Two seventeen, Chips Road resurfacing capital project budget adjustment.
Chip's on with it, huh?
It did, Governor Cuomo did increase it.
Three seventy-two, that's good.
Four, capital project extreme winter recovery EWR program budget adjustment. That was another governor, well, it was the governor of the, I think it was Assembly and the Senate and the governor. Additional money we got. Five, capital, highway capital project pave New York program budget adjustment.
I guess there's supposed to be a new one.
Yeah, I came up with some additional money in this couple of years.
Dump it in there, well, that, they do a lot of work, the statewide.
All right, we got six, NRP Holdings Acquisitions LLC Tractor Supply Water Main Extension Water Capital Budget Adoption. This is to do the MAP implant for, hopefully, a new tractor supply in Calverton.
It's their fees, so.
I love tractor supply. Good?
Mm-hmm.
Seven, Riverhead Central School District Service Stub Installation Capital Project.
So no development fees, so they paying.
Not Edwards, which is a service stub.
Wait, you're gonna put the bus garage up there?
I'll never understand their design of that, did you look at the entrance of that? They put that island in the middle of the entranceway, so the, I, I can't, I don't, I shouldn't say what-
Keep some runaway buses getting into the door.
I wanna see-
I don't know.
I wanna see the traffic at, uh, Route twenty-five at Edwards Avenue, when all the buses start coming back.
Be interesting.
I mean, leaving too.
I mean, now you get out of there, it's so narrow, the entrance is so narrow.
Didn't we request the state to look at that?
They're not bad.
No, we requested the school district to change the entrance, and they refused.
I drove school, but they don't drive much different than a car, really, because the wheelbase is so short on it.
Stan Carey met with the school district and asked them to do a deceleration lane and widen the entrance. The buses, and then the school district refused. And they came up, you should look at, the entrance is so narrow. And there has a concrete island, it's not even a mountable curb. So i- if that bus doesn't make, swing the term, that, they can't even jump the curb, because there's a fence on the curb. I don't, that was a terrible design, we'll see what happens.
It's a terrible design, what's going on right now on School Street, behind the middle school in the morning, with all the buses trying to get into that bus depot, so it'll fix that area over there, but create a problem somewhere else if they don't do it right.
Yeah, when they move out, that's fixed, yeah.
You know what, my new route is gonna have to be, is to come up behind Calverton and come out at a waiting river. I've been going home down, actually, Doctor's Path in Sound Avenue.
Twenty-five, you can't go easy, at thirty-nine o'clock, you can't go west.
They'd be twenty minutes to get through Main Street at four o'clock in the afternoon, too.
To get to Fischel.
No, to go from Fischel to Griffin Hardware takes twenty minutes.
Oh, yeah, well, but once they fix that traffic circle, two lanes, you'll see it moving along, huh?
Unless my aunt has, she'll be long enough.
All right, eight, engineering fees for the installation of an eight-inch pressure reducing valve. He money, installation on Pier Avenue and Sound Avenue. I don't know why we need that, but it's water district funds.
Water key funds.
It's probably the same concept that, so we can control the pressures in different areas and not just open every pipe wide.
Probably has something to do with this Suffolk County water.
I'm not sure, because they do have their-
Worthy putting it.
It's very close to where they meet up.
Pier Avenue. Pier Avenue and-
Oh, Pier Avenue.
Sound Avenue.
Might be our way of governing Suffolk County water.
Nine, Waiting River Playground Budget Adjustment. We actually, they are gonna put nice.
That's not that old.
No, but the sound-
I don't know, it's been there in two thousand eight.
It's kicking a crack, um, crack. Yeah, no, we've gotta do it.
We have to get it.
Oh, I understand, I-
Are you good, is the committee good with that?
I'm not sure, Ray was supposed to contact him.
All right, well, hopefully we get a decision, because I'm prepared to vote for this. Ten, general fund senior parking lot budget adjustment. We're paving the senior parking lot.
Thank God, that thing's bad.
Town Hall parking lot's gonna need it.
Yeah, I know.
It's bad.
So it's him as liaison to the recreation committee, you'll get confirmation for us before we vote on this on Tuesday, that that's where they wanna spend this fifty thousand.
Ray will be in contact with them prior to Tuesday, if he's not, I will be.
Great.
Otherwise, we'll overrule them. It needs to be done.
Yeah, but they just need to be aware of it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Twelve, authorizes town clerk to post and publish attached notice to bidders for street light and traffic signal maintenance repair parts.
No, we talked about it.
You good with the bid spec?
Eleven is the bottom. Oh, there is no number eleven, I got twelve.
I thought you were just mixed up, I am, I got ten to twelve.
Okay.
I'm still in the bid spec, so. That's your hundred and thirty pages.
Are we saving?
I don't know. So I got ele- eleven, author, authorize the town clerk to post and publish attached notice to bidders for disposal of town-generated construction and demolition material. Is everybody on eleven?
Yes.
We good?
Yep.
Yep, we have it up, Bruce.
Another bid spec.
It's a short one, though, it's only ninety-five feet.
I have to tell you, this, this, using the I, these surfaces is really helpful.
There must be a way you can staple these together on, on, in virtual form.
Well, if you do that Ctrl Shift and whatever, I don't know what that thing is.
Control F, and then WS one.
That's too much work.
All right, we have thirteen, authorizes town clerk to post and publish the attached notice to bidders for town hall West LED light fixtures.
That's good.
We good?
Yep.
Okay, I don't mind publishing posting.
Try to save energy.
Well, now that we're gonna make Drew the, um, czar of heat and electric, he's gonna run around. Hey Drew, you know what you're gonna have to do? You're gonna be the guy that in the wintertime goes and cuts the plug ends off all those little electric heaters. You're gonna be like, I keep track, you can't have that.
Yeah, we're gonna get you one of those capes with a big lightning bolt on the back of it.
Yeah.
You know, that's a safety issue, too, these, these electric heaters underneath the death.
Fire marshal said it was okay.
Why'd he say it was okay?
I have no idea.
Before I forget, there's some lights in the parking lot that are out, behind Parabel in that parking lot. Some of those lights aren't lit up.
Yeah. Get right on it.
Need the numbers, yeah.
I don't know, I was just, John from Parabel brought it up at the meeting.
We don't let up, our light crew go out at night, because we have no lights, so they can say-
The police department is supposed to take the numbers down and transmit them to the-
Oh, yeah, 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 that was a great one.
Monday, we'll tell the chief again, not again, we'll tell the chief to get his guys up.
They do it twice a year, he said.
Yeah, well, that's about right.
No, they should do it every midnight, they should do it.
It used to be once a month it was done.
Yes, every midnight, they should do it.
Okay, fourteen, are we there? Authorize highway superintendent to attend the two thousand seventeen APOA, Quacks Conference.
It was this year.
I don't know, it's usually someplace expensive.
Orlando, oh my, I hope he sees Mickey.
Oh, boy, I remember I used to vote against every single one of those.
BWS.
Are you good?
Well, maybe you can fly Frontier, they're doing thirty-nine dollar flights when they go out.
Orlando in August, not my, not the place I'd wanna be. Is that what it is, August?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, resolution fifteen, appoints temporary part-time water treatment plant operators, oh, we found some guys.
Yeah, that's okay.
Oh, these are our old guys, Bokey and Dave.
Who, who are these people?
Yeah, they're retirees, well, Bokey, I know Bokey-
He just retired.
Dave, was he one of our retirees? I don't know.
Oh, they retired and they're coming back during the summer season?
I don't think he's one of our, I think he's somebody else.
Wow. Kicking you in, man.
I thought both of them were people that I recognize.
Sixteen, how long has this guy been?
Sixteen, accepts a regna- resignation of a part-time police officer.
That was close back to January, was it retroactive or something?
How long has he worked?
I don't know, you're gonna ask the chief. The, we graduated eight part-timers Tuesday, Tuesday.
Right.
Yep.
So it is pretty cool, so we're up to fifteen part-timers or fourteen part-timers, um, so that's pretty cool.
Why, why is this resignation backdated to January? Because apparently it was never done. Oh, did he, did he go through?
He's not working.
I don't even know, I don't know him either.
All right, seventeen, you ready?
I'm ready, can't wait.
Points a seasonal beach attendance to the recreation department.
Well, here we go. Ten dollars.
Level one was, we're not starting them at minimum wage?
Points park attendance to the recreation department.
Why don't we start them at minimum wage?
This is that whole thing that was worked out with Bill when we did the salary schedule.
The schedule started, you put one title starting at minimum wage, the next one, the next title up from that was higher, and then all the other titles were above minimum wage. This was the only one that started at minimum wage.
But it says ten twenty-five. That's not minimum wage.
Oh, I thought it was ten dollars.
Ten dollars it says.
Ten twenty-five.
Ten dollars is for a park attendant one is ten dollars.
Actually, I thought, wasn't, isn't minimum wage nine seventy-five?
This is beach attendant, level one, ten twenty-five.
What are you looking at?
Start June seventh, twenty seventeen.
Well, beach attendants are different than park attendants.
We have, we have one title that starts at ten dollars an hour. All the other titles on that.
Park attendants, right.
Park attendants do a lot more work.
Park attendants are ten, beach attendants are ten twenty-five.
Beach attendants just stay at the beach. Park, they line up fields, they do everything. They do, they line up eight four fields.
Okay, so they get an extra twenty-five cents an hour. We good?
Yep.
Eighteen, appoints park attendants to the recreation department.
Here we go. That's ten dollars an hour.
Those are ten dollars an hour.
That's the guy that does the, does the school boards, puts the board. So the park attendant that works harder gets paid less. Well, I'm not so sure that that's, that's true.
I got, I got.
I don't think that statement is true.
We went and you guys beat this for us quite a bit to try to get the salaries.
Ray had put one, one title at ten dollars an hour and the other titles that had more responsibilities based on his experience of what was more responsibilities, whether the handling cash or whatever, maybe he put it, he put it different levels. And then we went from there and gave the two percent.
Beach attendant one is ten.
Very generous of him.
We did, you voted on it.
Some, some titles actually started lower than they were last year.
Based on his recommendations.
Good. I agree with that eleven.
Nineteen, appoints call-in assistant recreation leader to the rec department. Helen Kennedy, don't know her.
Now, he is one.
She's level two, so she's going back a second year.
The leader is getting less money, less money than the, the attendants. So, I mean.
Where are you at? Which one you want?
How many years?
The money just read. She's getting, this leader is getting eleven dollars an hour.
Ray has a whole.
The park attendants get eleven sixty-five an hour.
John, Ray has an entire chart. If you wanna go sit with him and.
This is a call-in assistant recreation leader, first year working, brand-new employee.
He brings, what do we hire, like three hundred or something like that? He doubles the size, almost doubles the size of the town for the recreation program.
Yeah, it's like.
It's like five hundred, we, we got about five hundred and fifty employees or something like that when we run the rec programs. So it's not an insubstantial task.
I can't believe we're, we're talking about a quarter.
I'm not. I'm more talking about resolution twenty, appoint seasonal lifeguards. We on twenty?
Yes.
Yeah.
Twelve fifty an hour.
And they're all level one.
Those are lifeguards.
Points a call-in twenty-one, assistant recreation leader to the recreation department, Lori McKillop. Twenty-two, ratifies appointment of call-in assistant recreation leader one to the recreation department. Good?
Yeah, she's level three.
Twenty-three, are we up to twenty-three?
Yep.
Points a call-in registered nurse to the recreation department.
Ooh, nurse.
Forty-two dollars an hour. That was something we had to do.
Yes.
She has a license.
We good?
Yep.
Twenty-four, appoints call-in registered nurse to the recreation department. I guess we're doing it.
Are we doing it twice? Oh, two people.
Well, the call-in case one can't make it.
Oh, I like the suing. She's good. She's my favorite.
Twenty-five, adopts cellular phone, cellular phone policy usage agreement for the town of Riverhead. We're modifying the one that we had.
In what way?
How are we, uh?
They can't put their numbers.
How are we matifying?
They can't, we.
Used to give them their numbers, let them take their numbers with them.
Yeah, we're not letting, we were letting employees take their numbers and.
Yeah, because they use that number for a while along, so.
I'm taking mine while I go.
So we're modifying it, we're mod, um, I think that was the biggest thing. You're not supposed to take your cell phone with you when you go.
The number is town property, so we can't.
I don't care.
And the phone is town property.
No, 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 I see the phone, but the telephone number, I don't know.
What is this effective?
I want my number.
Well, it's not. We didn't take, we didn't adopt it. Soon as we adopted.
I know, but when we had, okay, so then it'll be for everybody thereafter.
Yep.
I want my number. I'm gonna fight you on that damn volty.
Nobody really, it's a town, it's a town.
Bad.
Okay.
I mean, what do we care if somebody takes their phone number with them as long as they're paying the bill? Like, it's, it's been their phone number for.
No, no, they're not gonna pay the.
It's not their phone number, it's our phone number.
When you move from, from Riverhead to Islip, you can take your Riverhead number with you at Islip.
Yeah, I mean.
And it's not, the town owns the phone number.
The town owns a block of phones and a block of numbers is what they're saying, and they wanna keep their.
In theory, all those phone calls that come to that number are town business. So we should be taking that phone number and putting that on another phone so if something comes in, we know that it is our position, that we deal with whatever it is.
It's not the employee's number, it's the town's number for that position, so the next person in that position would get that same number. So if I'm calling a building inspector or whoever else has the phone, I know that I'm now getting that person as opposed to.
Doesn't count for us.
What do you mean it doesn't count for you? Of course it does.
It does count for you.
Of course it will. I mean, the phone will stay here, but I doubt if the next house person that takes my spots will have that phone number.
Well, that's what Bill's saying.
The phone I was given had the phone number to some guy in sanitation. I get his calls all the time.
Is that right?
Yeah.
That's it. That's the problem. That's the problem.
I don't have a town cellphone. I never have.
It's time people.
Yes, the sanitation calls.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
Most people are talking about garbage anyway.
I'm putting the resolution up. You guys could choose whether you wanna adopt it or not.
So when John leaves, then we get his phone and we can answer all his calls?
Somebody has to. Twenty-six, Plant Ten Variable Frequency Drive Installation Budget Adjustment. Is that the same?
Town's getting some work done.
That looks like a.
Is that the same resolution?
Yeah.
It's the same area? Is this down at?
Take the twenty-sixth out, Diane.
Is it Pier Avenue?
No, this is the Plant Ten thing. Twenty-six is a double.
Okay.
Twenty-seven, adopts local law amending chapter two eighty-nine entitled Vehicles Traffic Parking Regulations to the Town Code. Parking prohibited, Conic Bay Boulevard. We ready to adopt this?
That's the beach.
Yep. Ready to adopt that, John?
Yeah, the only, the only people falling in front of the solid chance.
Twenty-eight, ratifies amendment to resolution sixty-three R, authorizing the acceptance of donations from a committee organized for the purpose of scheduling and hosting events to display, promote, and celebrate the two hundred twenty-fifth anniversary of the town of Riverhead. An authorized financial administrator establish and manage a trust and agency fund. We amended this because it had, all the money was going into, do the publication of the journal and we need, you need money for, like, running the.
Disbursement, right.
You know, I think that when we have something, we should look around and see what else is at that night. They're having a big fundraiser that the same night as, on a night.
I'm pretty sure this is.
John, this was done a year and a half ago, so anything that came in after this date, they needed to look around and see what else was scheduled. Sorry.
Right.
This was done a year and a half ago.
Twenty-nine, approves, what, I'm going with my wife, but how many registrants are we up to? I probably haven't registered yet.
You don't wanna know.
Okay, twenty.
People, we need you to sign up for the Colonial Ball, please.
We need more than five.
Colonial Ball. Where are the Democrats that are running? They've gotta be here. They gotta be at the ball. Did you sell them ticket sets?
They're going.
Good, good, good.
They're going.
But their hoops.
They put an ad for you in the ad in the journal.
They're Democrats. They know they're Democrats.
Put a full-page ad in the journal.
Just not here. Nobody say their names?
No.
They already bought tickets, don't worry.
Number twenty-nine, number twenty-nine is what?
I'm gonna be sitting next to the dumpster. Twenty-nine, approves the application of fireworks permit of the Riverhead Business Improvement District Management Association, July third. Be there or be square.
Why a dumpster?
He really likes the smell of garbage.
Huh? Oscar? We're gonna call you Oscar.
Anybody have a calendar?
Why?
Because I think July fourth's on a Tuesday.
That's why it says Monday, July third.
And this says on Sunday, July third.
Well, maybe the body's wrong, but up there's right.
Okay, I'm reading the.
Monday, July third.
All right, well, I guess the content is wrong.
It is Monday.
Uh?
Otherwise, you'll, we'll fix it anyway because, you know, somebody will catch it. Good, you catch, John. All right, thirty, approves the application of fireworks permit of Bating Hollow Club Saturday, August twenty-sixth.
Wooton thinks that long as the top's okay.
No, I said the top was.
The resolution of.
No, we don't, so ever speak what Wooton thinks. You have no idea.
You said, you said to me, you said to me, it says it right on top.
Oh, we're up to resolution thirty. Are we good with, approves the application of fireworks permit for Bating Hollow Club Saturday, August twenty-sixth.
Yes.
Good? Good, down there?
I'm not sure, sure I like this.
Three of us like it.
What are they doing it for?
They do it every.
This is for a wedding.
Usually for a wedding.
Yes, they do it every year for a wedding.
They do it two or three a, a year.
Yeah.
I thought they weren't supposed to do anything.
She electronically filed the permit? Okay, thirty-one, ratifies the approval of chapter two fifty-five application of North Brookhaven Chamber of Commerce Annual Duck Pond Day.
This Sunday. That's this Sunday.
It's a little late, but.
I, I saw it on my calendar, but that's first I heard of it.
Yep. We good?
Do they have them parade too? I guess they do. They always do.
Yep. Thirty-two, approves chapter two fifty-five application of Bishop McGann Mercy Run for the Bus, five K run Saturday, September thirtieth.
Let's put a bus.
What is Run for the Bus?
They run down the two beers and back.
I just don't know. I just wonder what Run for the Bus is, but. Thirty-three, approves chapter two fifty-five. Are they buying a bus? Am I reading that wrong? Yeah.
Maybe they're trying to catch up to it, I don't know.
Run after the bus? Sketcher off the back of the bus? Is that what's?
It's a Run for the Bus. They're trying to buy a bus so that they don't have to pay a bus company to transport the students to and from away games.
See, there you go. Jody.
Believe me, Jody knows, see?
Thirty-three, approves chapter two fifty-five application of Old Steeple Church Annual Antique Fair Saturday, August twenty-sixth. Good?
Yep.
Yeah.
Thirty-four denies chapter two fifty, special events, application of Rugged Races LLC, DBA Rugged Maniac, five K Obstacle Course and Festival. This is up at Calverton Links. I mean, they have not done their site plan. I told Lori, Laura to put a resolution to denying it because they haven't done their site plan, so how you gonna approve something during the same boat they were in last year?
And they keep having events without coming in to us, so.
Absolutely.
Oh, we got that full-time code enforcement officer on Saturday.
Yeah.
They can write tickets.
You can just chain it off.
Thirty-five.
Well, you know, again, they can have this every Saturday they want, and if they get a summons, it's, it's just doing business. All the justice court can do is fine you. So it's, if I had to pay a hundred dollars, it's a hundred dollars to do a business.
But they already have an approved site plan, and we do have something in the code that says that they're in violation of their site plan, that we can fine them up to, I think it's five thousand dollars.
That's up to the court.
Mm-hmm.
That's no longer the cost of doing business when you get up like that, so.
Authorizes town clerk to publish and post a notice of public hearing to consider a proposed local law for an amendment to chapter two eighty-nine Vehicles and Traffic Parking Regulations to the Riverhead Town Code. Parking for handicapped persons. What is this, John?
You got me. The first time I seen it.
Conic River Park Parking Lot, Westerly Portion.
Where's, call three spaces.
Oh, that should've been done a long time ago.
Is this you, the parking district?
What, what they wanted to do was they.
They have this here now. They have, they have handicap parking there.
It's probably not in the code.
Not in the code. We moved, we moved it after Joe's Garage was built.
Yes.
It made better sense to have it there.
Yeah.
For the ramps, and I guess it's just never codified.
Okay, so.
Okay, just, okay.
Codifying it. Oh, yeah.
Oh, there's the map right here.
There it is.
Actually, are we gonna open up this information booth? Why don't we remove it? We're not gonna open it up.
What information booth on the front?
The old candy store.
Yeah, the old candy store.
I don't, I, that's, the bid uses that.
That's never opened.
I don't know what they do with it.
Then they have an emergency phone in, I don't know if that works.
I don't know, but why, it's just not hurting anything sitting there.
It's a shed. It's a shed.
It's a shed.
It's not hurting anything. It's cute. B and G keeps it up relatively decent, I guess.
There you go, John. Come January one.
That's there, there.
That could be your new office.
Wait, where are we?
That could be something for you to do.
Is that where the parking stalls are going by John's new office?
Where is it? Yeah, I don't know.
Yes, they'll give them a handicap stall and everything there.
I don't know. Jim, is that where the work's going?
Oh, here, it's going right here.
Yeah, I don't think the handicap stalls are there now.
Well, then we have to move them from where they are now, then. Then we'll have, we're gonna have five over here now.
Okay, I don't know where this came from. Jill, can you find out where this handicap parking stall thing came from? Because I. It is.
We have to get rid of the other two.
Resolution thirty-five. I have no idea. It looks like they're putting new hand, more handicap stalls in there.
They are.
And nobody knows where this came from. Came from the town attorney's office, but I don't know under whose order.
I don't know why they would do that anyway because it is so far away from everything.
They're not enough there for.
It is.
Well, I think, you know what? I, I, I think they had to look at it. I think there's a form of the county need. But I can tell you now, now that we lost all that park and over Long Island Science Center, there's no parking. I mean, so people that are using gradual park, like when the Friday night concert series starts in July, people are gonna be parking over there and coming across Conic Avenue to get into the park, so.
That's not even Joe's garage there. That's, that, that aerial is so old. That's the old vault.
It's, it's, it is, it is Joe's, well, there was a ramp there.
Oh, this isn't Joe's garage.
Well, it's, no, it's that little island of.
So the spots are already there?
Spots are there.
The spots are there, just up.
Codifying it, okay, that's fine.
I think those are the ones that we already put there. It's just to codify and so.
That's what I, that's what I'm saying. He's saying.
Issue a summons on it.
I think they're already there.
No, the, the, these aren't here. What, they are, they're over here.
Now, can you go check?
Sorry.
They're right here over here, behind Joe's garage.
I think they exist already.
The what?
I think they exist already.
You think they got real?
Yeah.
I don't know.
We'll find out. How about that? Number thirty-six.
I'll double check.
All right, I'll look.
Thirty-six, ratifies execution of agreement with.
I'm gonna need, I need a handicap anyway.
TVC Studios for Violet Film Series. Utilize a parking lot for Violet, season two Netflix. People are asking me in Rotary what this was in the.
Oh, yeah, they had, they were there yesterday. The parking lot was all closed off yesterday.
Where's this at?
This is downtown Riverhead.
They filmed at the aquarium. They came out and filmed at the aquarium.
Is that why that parking lot was?
Yeah.
Correct. Behind the theater was blocked off?
Not behind the theater, not at all.
No, behind the theaters, that's Bob Costaldi owns that.
The one-way street, shh, the one-way street.
Yeah, I figured that. I'm wondering about, you know about that?
Yes, Bob Costaldi, that's his property. That's, he marked it off, and so we have to figure out what.
That's his property?
Yeah.
Okay, can we just concentrate on the resolutions?
All right, go ahead.
That was given, no, no, let me explain. When, when he got that property.
No, no, I need history lesson. Go ahead, thirty-seven.
Oh, you know the history. Oh, you know the history.
Yeah, the town gave, granted it to him to build the rest of that, the brain room and.
I remember that.
Five stories, that building, move the apartments.
I thought that was the fencing.
Thirty-seven, authorizes supervisor to execute agreement with Columbia School of Arts. Utilize police personnel and police cars for the Run Series. Bob, what is the Run Series? Do we know?
Uh, the Run is a private filming, not through Columbia Law School, I mean Columbia College School, and Diana Court and Waiting Riverhead ended up. They are, it's a cul-de-sac, and they're looking to close off the road for short period of time to do a film.
Where's Diana Court? I see it in my mind.
South of twenty-five Ave, yeah, down on the right-hand side.
Oh, I thought you said down on the bluff.
No, no, all of, uh, all of Waiting Riverhead and the road is Diana, is a Mary.
Okay.
So, this is a residential neighborhood, and like, there's all residences down at the cul, at the end of the cul-de-sac, so why did they pick this location, and how do the residents feel about it?
I have spoken to the residents, um.
I mean, it's not like it's a parking, a public parking lot, and.
Well, they are using part of the street.
Right, but I'm just curious as to how they picked this location, because it looks from the aerial that there's all residents at the end of this block, so are they gonna be at a residence house filming, or?
They, they are using one, somebody they knew who was using, they're using their house as a, as a location.
We have to make sure the neighbors know and they're not gonna be really upset about it, so.
Having a big birthday party or something where there's no parking.
When are they doing this? When do they?
Trucks all over the place.
All right, so we need to figure out, Jody's right, we need to figure out from the resident's standpoint what exactly they're doing and.
I would love to not do filming.
No, but they did that, but it was the elder one, they told everyone on Creek Road.
But we don't know that they did this.
No, I know.
So we have to find that out. And is June twenty-eighth, what day of the week is that?
It is, I think, a Thursday. Um, wait a second.
All right, so we need to report back, before we adopt this, we need to report back that the residents understand and give them our phone number to call if they have any complaints or something, so we know not to do this.
You can Bob's number.
When are the next town board meeting?
Wednesday, yes.
This is, this is gonna be done on June twenty-eighth.
Uh, next town board meeting would be the twentieth.
Okay, so let's find out, we're not adopting it unless we get sign off from the residents. Just not, we don't need sign off, we need them to know that it's happening, make sure it's not impacting, I mean, I can't imagine on a Wednesday it's gonna be tremendous, but I don't want to close the road down and people have to walk in from the street with their groceries. So that's what we want. Some sort of sign off. Send Mr. Keller to the residence house.
No, the last year, the, they didn't get sign of land and paying most of the residents.
Okay, well, somebody's gotta do something. There you go, Mr. Keller, he's, he knows where it is.
Figure it out.
Well, I'll figure it out with Mr. Keller.
Very good.
All right, thank you. Thirty-eight, authorize town clerk to publish and post a public notice to consider a local law to add new chapter two fifty entitled Municipal Building Energy Benchmarking. Oh, this is Drew the Energy Zar.
This is Drew, yeah.
Work session.
Drew the Energy Zar. Gotta get a big scissors, cut all the plugs in, it's off, so you can't have your heaters. You guys good? We talked about that last week. Thirty-nine, author approves agreement between Windship Media LLC and the town of Riverhead utilize parking police personnel.
A food and wine festival at James Ford Vineyard.
What are they, oh, this is for a festival. I'm stuck on filming. Okay. Okay, well, if they're gonna pay the police to be there.
It's, uh, two T C Os.
Okay. Forty accepts resignation of member to the Mobile Manufactured Home Task Force, George Packy is leaving. I just gotta put somebody else on there, I guess. Forty-one, authorizes notice to bidders installation of water mains and appurtenances to Water District System Improvements Riverhead Water District Project R D W D sixteen fifty-three.
I got a few of those generators. I don't pertinent, I didn't paint.
Yeah, this is all the stuff that we just posted the bond for. Some of the stuff we're gonna pay in-house. Um, authorizes notice to bidders installation of emergency generators Plant One and Sixteen.
I need that. Here's highway painting, hydrant painting.
Forty-three, authorize notice to bidders for annual hydrant painting and maintenance contract, Riverhead Water District. Forty-four, anti-bias task force initiative budget adoption.
They have, they have expenditures.
I got a gift of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, they got a donation.
So we have to spend it on that.
All right, bagels and cake every meeting.
Forty-five, community development agency budget adjustment.
That's the account that we closed down, that we recognized revenue in the C D A fund.
Okay, good, because they're gonna need it. All right, what do we have, forty?
Wait, 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 you got one more.
You got one more.
Forty-six.
Forty-six.
You saw the blank and you thought it was this.
That's exactly right. Authorize attendance at cybersecurity conference. Oh, Bill.
Will you, you going?
Me and Lori, as of now, yes.
When are you going?
Where are they being held?
In Albany.
Albany is so beautiful.
Held by the state, so there's no fee for the conferences, just.
John, I put my computer back there.
Okay.
Probably you get me a job. Forty-seven, authorize supervisor to execute an addendum agreement with L K McLean Associates for the survey of the southeast portion of Ecal Bike Path. Jody, you good with that? That's your bike path?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Forty-eight, authorize supervisor to execute an addendum agreement with Lockwood Kessler Bartlett, Inc. for engineering services for South James Ford Avenue Road and Drainage Improvements.
That really needs to be done, that gets done every ten years.
Where is this? Where are they gonna do the improvements?
South James Ford Avenue.
Down near, uh, down near the boat basin down there. Big problem down there.
By where?
Where, South James Ford Avenue goes down towards, uh.
Is it flooding?
Yeah, is that it?
Big drainage problems with the, going across the street.
Isn't that Washington Avenue?
On the other side, South James Ford, it's.
It is Washington.
It's?
Here probably is Washington.